Good evening, everybody, and welcome. Sorry for the delay. We had some technical difficulties, but we are back in the boardroom. There's a few of us here with Dr. Maleko. The rest of my colleagues are online through the virtual board meeting. I want to thank Eric and Jacob for everything they've done tonight to make this meeting happen. Also, Joanne, Sean, and Bill. This room is ready. I can tell this is awesome. And then, obviously, the captain of the ship, David Mustin. Great job, and thank you. I will go ahead and call this meeting to order. Roll call, please, Madam Secretary.
Mary Lane is here. Roxanne McDonald?
Here.
Michael Mead?
Here.
Adel Moser?
Here.
Mary Petlicoff?
Here.
James Thorpe?
Here.
President Barry?
Here. Thank you. Next item, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Mr. Robert Attie, Principal of Duval Elementary School, will introduce students who will lead the pledge of allegiance.
Hi, this is Mr. Attie, the principal of Duval Elementary, leading us with the pledge of allegiance for the June 22 Board of Education meeting, our current, former, and future Duval Penguins. With us today are Olivia Mackwood, Zach Mackwood, and Alex Mackwood.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job.
Great job.
Thank you. (applause). Okay, next item.
That was amazing. Superintendent's update. Moment of silence.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Just as we've done at every board meeting since the COVID crisis, I would like to take a moment of silence in general recognition for all those that may have lost their lives as a result of the crisis and/or anyone who is suffering as a result of the current COVID-19 crisis. So if we could, please, observe a moment of silence. Thank you. I'm also doing that at all of my general administrators' meetings with the principals.
Thank you. Next item. Next item, please.
Agenda items: retirements.
So we have some retirements coming in, and so I'll announce their names. And we want to both congratulate them and thank them for their years of service in the Dearborn Public Schools. So we'll start with, we have Robin Roberts, 19 years; Mustafa Sala, over 27 years of service; Michael Tindall, 19 years of service; Scott Usher, 34 years of service; and Cheryl Johnson, 21 years of service. Again, congratulations to all of them. Let's show our appreciation.[251.37][251.37](applause).
Next item, please.
Budget.
So I just wanted to mention, we have two board meetings in June every year, and the reason for it is because we have to pass the budget. So today on the agenda is the budget. We've had multiple finance committee meetings, and we've also, last board meeting, we had a presentation from Mr. Wall with a very extensive report, both at the meeting and during the finance. And we've also had our auditors involved. So tonight, I just wanted to point it out to the public that we do by law have to pass that by June 30th. Again, it does put us, because of the way the state operates, the state does not have to declare their budget until October 1st. So it puts us at a bit of a disadvantage, especially in this situation. But we have to do it based on an estimate of what we think. And as the board is aware, and those on the finance committee, we have three different models, and so we're going with the most likely. And that's what you're going to see tonight for action on the board agenda formally. And I want to thank Mr. Wall, the team in the finance committee, and the board for their leadership in this area. I do think that, you know, the fund balance we've built up is going to allow us to help weather this budget storm. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Computer purchase. Mr. Troy Patterson.
I'm going to call in Mr. Patterson right now to comment on this, because we did pass an action item last board meeting. But unfortunately, because of the shortage, we were not able to get him. So I'm going to see if Mr. Patterson can join us right now and make a couple comments about this action item. And we did send a memo to the board on this issue.
Good evening, board members. Last board member, at last board meeting, there was approval for purchasing additional Chromebooks. We are not the only district that's purchasing Chromebooks. And Intel is having difficulty meeting demand, so they cannot build the processor that was in the Chromebook that we ordered. Because of that, Dell cannot even order the Chromebooks that we had requested. So we ordered 7,076 Chromebooks. We tried to order 7,076 Chromebooks, but those are just not available. We worked with Dell to see if there was anything else. They have absolutely no other Chromebooks that can work for us. So we did reach out to HP, who we've listed in the past, and we are able to get HP Chromebook. They have a different processor. At the end of the day, the users are not going to notice any difference. A Chromebook is a Chromebook. But these are, the AMD processors are ones that we can get, so we should get them in on a reasonable basis. So that's why the change from Dell to HP for the Chromebooks.
Trustee Elaine, you got a question? Mr. Patterson?
I did have a question. I'd like to ask Mr. Patterson, or maybe it's appropriate to someone else, I don't know. But we distributed 5,000 Chromebooks to our students. And we told them that we were giving them out, and they should return them. I wonder, has there been any attempt to get them returned? Do we not want them returned? What's going on with that? And then, Dr. Maleko, I don't know whether you may or may not know the answer to this. Do private schools and other schools' charters, have they distributed Chromebooks and meals also, or just public schools like us?
I'll answer the first part. The direction the district has gone in is to allow the families to keep the Chromebooks over the summer. And we are discussing a collection period, potentially for August. I've been asked to put together a plan for the executive directors to review for August on a return for the Chromebooks.
I just asked the question because I'm sure some taxpayers will want to know. I know people need to be thinking about cost, and then also whether, in the fall, will, at some point, or during the winter, we'll have to have students rely on them again. But I did want to reassure at least taxpayers that we would make every effort to be vigilant on expenditures of tax monies.
Very good point. Maleko?
So I'll comment on that as well. We did debate that when we were in the midst of the crisis. We felt like, with possible summer programs, and then our students coming back, it was a big operation to distribute them. And we, so I'm going to kind of answer the second question on the charters. I'm not really sure if they did or not. I'd have to look into it. We didn't hesitate, though. We knew it was the right thing to do, and it was a major operation to distribute them. So we felt like the students could continue their learning over the summer. We still have the waiver, or the permissions signed. We know who has them. There's some that will be, you know, through wear and tear and older, that will have to be replaced or be upgraded through Mr. Patterson. So we did discuss that, but we felt like it was best to keep them in place, given the crisis and given the fact that the students would be able to use them. They're still the property of Dearborn Public Schools, and we still have the, as I mentioned, the release, so that we will and we can, you know, collect them. The same token, we understand that with computers, even if they were being used in the school, you're going to have wear and tear, and you're going to have computers that are going to have to be replaced. So that's part of why the decision was made. I would then go back to Trustee Elaine. I'm not really sure, but we can see if others did. I know that we were ahead of other public school districts as well. Some did, but we didn't hesitate. We did it that very first week, because we knew it was the right thing to do. We didn't want to wait, and we're very fortunate that we did, especially with a district our size. It makes it a huge operation when you have so many, and I believe we gave out between 5,000 to 6,000. Some of the replacement of that will be through the CARES Act, which is going tonight. But we will be very cautious with the taxpayer money, and of course, we want to make sure we maintain any computers that are still, were able to function, and that's what we plan to do.
Thank you. I also agree with Trustee Elaine that, yeah, we need to keep an eye on the taxpayers' money. You know what? I heard from a parent that has a third grader and a fifth grader currently. For the fifth grader, they claimed that they were asked to bring the Chromebook back, not for the third grader. Are we thinking that the third grader might just hang on to the Chromebook? Because it was, I know it was a big effort to get those Chromebooks out, but the fifth grader's actually going to middle school, probably a different building, probably want to collect those. I don't know if that's the policy, but I assume, from talking to this one parent, that's what we're doing.
I'll see if Troy can, I believe that's the case. It's because we distributed them per school, and that's how we kept the inventory. So they wanted to maintain that inventory. So Troy, could you comment on that?
There was, there may have been a miscommunication with an individual principal or teacher who may have asked for a Chromebook back, but district-wide, we have not asked for any of the Chromebooks back over the summer, because we wanted kids to continue to learn and continue to have access to material and to the resources that we're still providing over the summer as well.
Okay, just as a follow-up.
If I might?
Would it make sense, would it make sense for, let's say, if we have had a second grader, a third grader, or a fourth grader, to maybe not collect it in August, want to hang on to it? Because we don't want to collect it and end up giving it back to them a couple weeks later. Just a comment. Trustee Elaine, I know you had something to add.
Oh, I just want to mention that people have the impression that a laptop is really expensive. This is a Chromebook, so the cost is much, much less. It's about $197. So it's not like giving out a $1,000 Dell laptop. And then also, I would just like to say, I'm very proud of the effort of our district, not only on meals, but on Chromebooks. And not just on Chromebooks, but on lessons. And as advocate for public education, this is the type of thing that makes me so proud that public education is not just the backbone of America, it's the whole skeleton of America. It holds our society together. This is why public education is great.
Trustee Petlicoff?
Yeah, I had a couple questions, too, about the changing the provider. Are we still getting the same kind of contract guarantees, so to speak? Because in HP, even though you say a Chromebook is a Chromebook, if we're using different processor and stuff, might not have the same longevity, resilience, I don't know, you know, those kinds of issues. So if we're going to be spending, even though I know it's grant money, for the most part, that is paying for the, are we going to get the same ability to see these through and extend it? Because I suspect, like everybody else does, that these students are going to be having to have these at home for probably at least a year of investment, depending on how this environment flows, that they're going to have to have this added support. So are we getting a similar product, really, in the, not in the functionality, but in the hardware itself?
That's a great question. And these aren't supported for the same amount of time as the Dells were. So the Chrome, the Chrome will be supported for, it's at least five years, I think it's eight years now, 2026, maybe '27. So these will be supported for the same amount of time, and the specs are very compatible, are very comparable, the same memory, a different processor, again. And we have had HPs before, so we feel that this is a good, our best second choice.
Well, I get that, but I've had a lot of HPs, and I've had Dell, Toshiba's and everything else. But I would say the one problem I've had with HPs is the batteries seem to die out within a year or two, and those kinds of things that, you know, HP. Have a laptop that we're handing out in two years, it isn't going to be worth, because we have to replace all the batteries or something.
Yeah, our experience, these are specifically designed for education, and our experience is that the HPs have held up pretty similarly as to the Dells.
Okay. All right. And we do anticipate that most of the Chromebooks we've already given out will probably as President Barry said. I don't want to take them back in August to turn around in two weeks' time to have to redistribute them to the same students, because either we have a high-classroom and the students are going to be doing enough at-home learning that they're still going to need to have these in their possessions or not. I mean, I want to make sure that we're being smart in how we're monitoring them, but how we're also distributing them.
We absolutely will, and that's part of the school reopening committee. And there's a lot of discussion about that, to make sure we make the best decision for the kid.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Patterson. There's nothing else. We'll go on to the next item, please.
The next items are non-agenda items. The first one of those is end of the school year.
So, Mr. President, if it's okay, I'll just kind of go down all of them.
Please, yeah.
Is that, okay, perfect. And I just want to also thank Mr. Patterson. He was actually on vacation today, but he came back in to make sure we get this budget for the Chromebooks. And again, he did a great job, and the team with the 5,000 that were distributed, so thank you, Mr. Patterson and your team. So the end of the school year, I just wanted to report, we had a successful end, given the situation. There was a lot of positive recognition ceremonies, and I heard nothing but positive, as people were sending me videos and pictures, and it's all over social media. So I want to thank the schools, the principals for their leadership, along with the teachers, and all the staff for recognizing our students, given the tough situation as far as dealing with the COVID-19 and the fact that we couldn't do our normal send-off for our students. So it was, I know the trustees were interested and been following it, and so they did a great job with that. The reopening committee, I will mention my involvement of the state committee. I'm going to maintain that involvement, but we're really wrapping up our work tomorrow, that we'll be sending our, one of the committees that I co-chair at the state level, we'll be sending our information to Dr. Rice, who will be sending it on to the governor for the task force. And then you may have heard that the governor is planning to bring something out, I believe, sometime after, either June 30th or after. So that was quick work over the summer. There was a lot of meetings involved, and appreciate the board's support to be involved. And then I think our Dearborn committee is moving along very well, under the leadership of Mesa, Molly Bazey, Jane Mazza, and David Higgins. I know we have some trustees on here, Trustee Lane and Trustee Thorpe. We have many community members. We have, I think it's a huge tally now, of over 100 people, because of the subcommittee. So we have a lot of people involved. Just so what everyone knows is, we're waiting for the governor, but we still are moving forward on that committee, and we're developing different plans. But once we see the framework from the governor, we will be looking to take the plans for Dearborn, and each subcommittee will be submitting a report to the chairs. And then those reports will be compiled eventually into a published document, probably by the end of July, and we may have some kind of a day where we unveil that. Now, we need the governor to come out first, but we are planning and we're preparing, so that's kind of the timeline we have, so that people will understand. And I'm going to put it under the caveat, is everything is subject to change. Understand that that is just the world of this COVID-19 situation, that you plan for multiple situations, and you prepare, but things could change depending what happens. And we're thankful that some of the numbers are going down in Michigan, but you never know what might happen. So thank you to the leadership of the governor and everyone at the state for doing what is appropriate, and for the citizens for doing their part, just like we are today with our masks and following and doing what we should do. I want to mention ASC officially reopened, partial reopening today. I put that out. We've been open for service to the public since the crisis began, through phone, internet, through email. But we will, we are now physically have a rotation of our staff, because we have to follow the governor's order. We went through our attorney, and so we have a rotation where our staff is coming in. They're working from home three days a week, and they're coming in two days a week on a rotation, two to two and a half days a week approximately. And again, we put all the information on the website where you can call. We will allow the public, we're going to allow for some public opening after the July 4th holiday. We would encourage individuals to continue calling us or getting in touch with us virtually or email, unless you absolutely have to come in. But if you do, we are going to start that opening, especially in the Student Services Department. But right now, they've been able to process everything electronically. And even, I know with notarization and whatnot, because of the governor's order, we've been able to do that electronically. So electronic is a good method, unless you absolutely have to, but we are starting to reopen. So that is what I have on the reopening.
I have a question.
Yes.
With the reopening to the public, as people need to come in, if they do physically need to come into the building, is it recommended that they make an appointment or call first, or is that not necessary?
So I would recommend that they try the virtual option first and contact the department to see, and then, once they determine they have to come in, then they can let them know to the departments. And then we will have, similar to when you go to the Costco or any other grocery store, we're going to have the physical distancing with the lines on the pavement, and people will have to wait and take their turn to come in through the welcome center. So it's probably a better idea to call first or email and set something up, rather than just showing up, and then you're not sure if that service will be there. Again, we are operational, but sometimes, even if you came in in a non-COVID situation, we might not have it available if you didn't pre-call. So that would be the, my advice is to call or email first, then we can help the public if they have to come in. Yes.
Trustee Lane, you got a question?
I just wanted to comment that probably the general public isn't aware, but the board members are, that there will be a summer school that's going to be conducted June 24th until August sometime. So I wanted to mention that the experience of those elementary and preschoolers can help us in the reopening. They'll have some firsthand experience with how long does it take getting people in, how easily do people adjust to the new protocols, and so on. So, Dr. Maleko, I mentioned to you before that I'd really love to have the, somebody from Dr. Chokel's office, or Dr. Chokel herself, or some of the summer school people inform the reopening committee what things went well, what things were problematic. And then lastly, I would just like to say that Michigan is one of only three states that is green for good and pretty safe. Because of our work, all of us doing what we should have done, like we're doing tonight, and I really appreciate that. I think that we ought to congratulate ourselves on being champions in, so far in this COVID. We did this voluntarily. The whole world is experiencing something, and we're doing a real yeoman's job of following what we know scientifically is recommended. But that was also because of the fortitude of our leadership, Governor Whitmer and Dr. Janine Keldoun. They got us through this crisis, and I sincerely thank them for their leadership during this time. So let's all hope that we can reopen and everything goes well.
Okay. So graduation update. I have a graduation update. It's been already out there publicly, but just so the public knows, I thought I'd announce it. We will be recognizing our graduates. The dates and the times are set for the approval of the last board meeting. We have Monday, July 13th, Atso Ford at 1:00. Tuesday, July 14th, Dearborn High at 4:00. Wednesday, July 15th, Fortson at 3:00. Thursday, July 16th, Magdalen at 6:00 p.m. We allowed flexibility for each school, given the number of students and given the situation in each building, and the board was supportive of that, so we appreciate that, and kind of the format. But it is going to be pretty similar, because the high school principals have been working very hard with their staffs and their teachers, and they've really put their heart into making sure that we will recognize all the students. And I know trustees have been involved, like Trustee Thorpe and Roxanne McDonald and others have joined in the student group. So thank you to the board for that. And thank you to, Trustee Petlicoff was able to arrange, we're going to have the names that will go through the city marquee at the Performing Arts Center. So on the dates of the graduation, the principals are sending in the names, and then they will go on the board at the Performing Arts Center. They're doing other things, too, to recognize the students. Some of them were surprises, but I can tell you that the principals are taking it very seriously and understand the situation. So I just wanted to put that out there, so that, publicly again, so that everyone is aware. The last thing I want to mention under other.
Trustee Petlicoff?
I just wanted, and I just wanted, it was a citizen who gave me the suggestion to contact the city and get the student names to scroll on the city marquee outside the civic center, and that was Paula Hamilton Stokes, who was a charter commissioner along with me and a former city employee. So I want to thank her for suggesting it in the first place, as a way to add recognition to this day, when they're not getting the same kind of formal event that they were used to in the past.
Brilliant idea.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. So last thing is just, under other, just wanted to mention that we are going to start gradually opening the playgrounds. We've talked to our attorneys. We did start opening fields. Understand, when we closed them, we were doing it because of the public health situation. We were doing what we thought was right to protect the health of the community. Now, we're going to start opening, we know we've been hearing the city's opening them. We went through our attorney, and we will put signage out that individuals should social distance, so we encourage and ask them to please do that. That was one of the things early on that wasn't happening, and was another reason why not only us, but the city had closed them. The playground equipment, we are going to say, you know, we, in the summer, we really only have the ability to sanitize that like once a week, because of the work we have and our staff. So we're going to put signage out there so that people understand, if they're using them, they're using them at their own risk. But I think the social distancing is the more important thing of the two, and just reminding people that they're cautious and careful when they're using the playgrounds. If this wasn't a COVID-19 situation, we would have them open, as we normally do. But we had to, and we made a decision in what we felt was the best interest, and we know it doesn't necessarily please everyone, but it was done for the right reasons, to protect the health and safety of the community. So we are pleased to say that we're going to start gradually opening those playgrounds up. Again, we had already started to open the fields, so people could get exercise. And that's all I have, unless there's questions or comments. Thank you, President.
Any questions? Oh, sorry. Trustee Moser?
Just a question on the playgrounds. So are they getting also maintained by us on a weekly basis, like as far as the garbage bins being taken care of by our staff, or is that city responsibility?
I know we have a contract with that. I'd have to get back to you on how that's handled. I could, I don't know if Mr. Andrews, maybe he can come on here later, I can get back to you after. I know we would have our normal cycle, though. We wouldn't change it based on the playgrounds. We would still be, because the engineers are still in the building, and the custodians are still coming in. So as they do their summer cleaning, they would still need to have the trash removed. If there was an issue somewhere, you know, someone could let us know, but I could get back to you, Trustee Moser, from Mr. Andrews, on the amount of cycle for that.
I can say, like during the day, when I drive by some of our schools, the custodians are out there taking care of business, picking up what they need to, taking care of business. So I very appreciate that. Trustee Petlicoff?
And I will guarantee you that the city will not maintain school property. It will be up to the school to maintain their own property. The city takes care of city parks, and the school district takes care of their properties.
We'll go on to the next item, please.
Next item is recognition and acknowledgements, and the first item is commendations.
That'll be Mr. Mustin. Yeah.
All righty. Thank you so much, Trustee Lane. We do have a few commendations tonight. Before I give the commendations, just a quick technical update. For those, I know that it really doesn't make sense to tell people who are trying to watch on Facebook that you can't watch us on Facebook tonight, because the stream isn't working.
But perhaps those who are watching on YouTube or watching us on the cable channel can text their friends who are trying to watch on Facebook. Right, Facebook, we do not control that streaming service. We just provide a feed and oftentimes we have some technical issues with that. Tonight is one of those nights. But our stream is going very well and stable on YouTube. Dearborn Public Schools, we have our own YouTube channel. So we encourage everybody to jump on over to our YouTube channel if you want to watch the streaming video. And of course, we are on Comcast and Wow, Channel 19 on Comcast if you want to watch them. So just a little quick, brief technical update before we get into the commendations. Tonight commendations to Troy Patterson, Director of Technology and Media Services, and Amy Quiz, Technology Coach, for their outstanding work as members of the Michigan Virtual Learning Continuity Workgroup. This team of 25 classroom teachers, building administrators, and district-level leaders from across the state have been meeting since April, really, to provide Michigan educators with the tools and support they need to ensure that all of their students have access to high-quality learning opportunities during the pandemic and even beyond, of course. The three main areas the group has been working on are professional learning, selecting a learning management system, and aggregating online content for core subject areas. Amy was instrumental in the work that was done to develop the teacher self-assessment, and that is related to professional development. And Troy was heavily involved in the learning management system evaluation tool. Special thanks to both Troy and Amy for the time and commitment that they both put forth to be part of this statewide committee. This is above and beyond their job duties here that have kept them very busy. Their positive representation in this group is a great testimonial for the work that's been going on in our district. And we want to thank them again for that service. Commercations to media specialist Nancy Hamayad at Fortson High School. The Media Center Library at Fortson has been awarded exemplary status by the State of Michigan Library System. By achieving this status, the library has demonstrated that they are meeting statewide benchmarks for excellent service, learning environment, and leadership for students. The exemplary status is good for three years before the school needs to re-imply. And so we want to take just a moment to congratulate Nancy and the entire team over at Fortson for achieving this honor. And of course, this is the time of year where now we talk about our graduates and we talk about the students. And I know we have some big graduations coming up in July. But we also want to take some time and make sure that we're congratulating our 118 students who will be graduating from the Collegiate Academy this year. The Collegiate Academy is one of the district's five-year programs. We offer several five-year programs. The Collegiate Academy is one of them. It's a little bit different than the others and a little bit unique. It gives the students the opportunity to earn a high school diploma and an associate's degree in five years as opposed to six years. And those who don't earn an associate's degree still accumulate college credit and it all can be transferred to four-year universities across the state and even out of state. This year, the graduates have earned an average of 60 college credits. They also have an average GPA of 3.19. And 66 of the 118 students did earn associate degrees as well. And as I mentioned, all of those credits are transferable. So if they choose to go on to a four-year university, they can do so and use those credits. In fact, we have an administrator here in our district, an assistant principal at one of our schools, whose son went through this program and is now in the, he not only got his associate's degree, he earned his bachelor's degree, graduated just recently, and is now in the police academy. And so will go on with the four-year degree and soon be a law enforcement officer. So we want to congratulate all those students on that great program. Thank the board for their leadership. That program was started under Superintendent Wiston, carried on through Superintendent Maleko. And we appreciate the board for supporting the Collegiate Academy. Great opportunity for our students. That is all of our commendations for this evening. I want to thank all of you very, very much.
Thank you very much. Makes us feel proud to hear those commendations. We'll go to the next item, please.
Approval of minutes of the following Dearborn Board of Education meetings. Regular P-12 meeting, June 8th, 2020, Board Report 19140. Policy Committee Meeting, June 11th, 2020, Board Report 19141. Recommended action is to make any necessary correction and move approval of these minutes.
So moved.
So moved. We have a motion that's moved by Dr. Mead, supported by trustee Thorpe. Are there any corrections, questions, or discussion items? Trustee Elaine?
I would just like to thank Joanne Harris, who does a really great job, and Kathy Demetrio at the college. They really are practically perfect in a difficult environment.
Yes, thank you very much. Okay, are there any questions? Hearing none, seeing none. We'll go ahead and, can we have a roll call vote, Madam Secretary, please?
Langen, yes. McDonald?
Yes.
Mead?
Yes.
Moser?
Yes.
Petlicoff?
Yes.
Thorpe?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes. Motion carries. Please attach a unanimous roll call vote. Thank you. Next item, please.